Call Dixon County Commission Regular Meeting ordered January fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve the agenda with no additions. I'll move that we approve it.
I'll second it.
And move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carried. Consent agenda. Minutes of the seventh, January seventh work session, regular meeting. Payroll of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Abatements of eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Capers, KPNF payments of forty-one thousand, five hundred and three twenty-five.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded. Been moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carried. Commissioners, comments? Committee reports? Laverne?
Yeah, the only thing that I really attended last Saturday, I did attend the legislative forum that Farm Beer had sponsored and it was for the three candidates running for the first district, Heels Camp, Marshall, and Police. And anyway, I thought the very informative far as Farm Beer had questions that they wanted all three of them to answer and so like I say, it looks like there will be like two challengers for Heels Camp's position there. So we see how the primary unfolds on that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Laverne. Out of work session, Sandra Clark from the Flint Hills Regional Council was here. It's she's the Regional Transit and Mobility Manager. A gentleman from Oldies was here, I can't remember his name. And then Corey Davis from the Kansas Department of Transportation was here. Jane Foltz gave some comments on how it's working in Abley and stuff. So we'll be considering participating in that in the near future. We did have our work session with our department heads and elected officials from ten till ten-thirty. And then Zanell came in and kind of gave us the end of the year, looking back at last year's budget. We do have National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Proclamation. Or anybody here who want to come up and?
Have you guys got everybody you're waiting on?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Because I told you about eleven-ten, wasn't it okay or?
Oh.
You got everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can read it or you can read it?
Whatever you want. My name is Vivian Clifton. I work for D-VAC. I'm one of the advocates.
Just a little highlight of what you do. If you'd want to speak to that.
We work with domestic violence, sexual abuse victims, human trafficking, stalking. We serve adults, adolescents, kids.
Out of where you're at?
Salina County.
Salina.
Uh-huh.
And do you want to introduce the people here with you?
We have Courtney. She's one of the advocates.
All right, thank you.
There are interns.
Okay, nerd yourself.
I'm Connor.
Connor?
Connor.
Connor?
Yes.
Is Connor? Okay. Well, I'll read it then for you. The National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Proclamation, January two thousand and sixteen. Whereas millions of men and women are victims of human trafficking, this modern day slavery occurs in countries throughout the world and in communities across our nation and is the second largest and fastest growing criminal industry in the world. Whereas human trafficking denies victims basic human dignity and freedom and is based upon recruiting, harboring, and transporting people through the use of force, fraud, and/or coercion for the purpose of sexual exploitation or forced labor, it is a crime that can take many forms and carries at our social fabric, debases our community, our common humanity, and violates what we stand for as a country. Whereas, the United States Department of Justice has identified Kansas as an originating state for human trafficking and most trafficking in Kansas involves local children. Whereas, the United States continues to be a leader in the global movement to end modern day slavery by working to combat human trafficking prosecuting perpetrators, help victims recover and rebuild their lives, and raise awareness about this problem. Whereas, with improved victim identification, medical and social services, training for the first responders, and increased public awareness, the men, women, and children who have suffered this cruel crime can overcome the bonds of modern slavery, receive protection and justice, and successfully reclaim their rightful independence. And whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas is joining forces with victim services providers, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens through the Dixon County and the United States to observe National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Together, we commit our society where our sense of justice tells that we can unite, eradicating this wrong and continuing to fight for the human dignity and the rights of every person. Now therefore, we, the county commissioners of Dixon County, do hereby proclaim January sixteenth as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month and applaud the efforts of many victim services providers, police officers, prosecutors, national community organizations, and private sectors and supporters for their effort in opposing human trafficking in all its forms. Got to do okay?
Yes.
You're great.
Eli?
We have work for stalking as well.
Yeah, okay.
He's got a copy.
Yeah, I've got a copy.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, we want to.
Change up the tone?
Yeah.
Is there a somewhere I stand? Okay. January has been proclaimed National Stalking Awareness Month. And also, by the way, I'm Courtney from D-VAC and I'm the Community Outreach and Engagement Coordinator. So thank you all for letting us do this. So, for January Stalking Awareness Month, whereas under the laws of all fifty states, the US Territories, and the District of Columbia, and the federal government, stalking is a crime. Seven point five million people were stalked in one year in the United States. And the majority of victims are stalked by someone that they know. Whereas, three in four women killed by an intimate partner had been stalked by that intimate partner. Whereas, many stalking victims lose time from work and experience serious psychological distress and loss productivity at a much higher rate than the general population. Whereas, many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs, and obtaining protection orders. Whereas, many stalkers use technology such as cell phones, global positioning systems, cameras and spyware to monitor and track their victims. Whereas, there's a need for great public awareness about the nature of criminality and potential lethality of stalking. Criminal justice systems can enhance their responses to stalking by regular training of law enforcement officers and aggressive investigation and prosecution of the crime. Whereas, the laws and public policies must be continually adapted to keep pace with new tactics used by stalkers. Communities can better combat stalking by adopting multidisciplinary responses by teams of local agencies and organizations and by providing more and better victim services. And whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Dickinson County and the United States to observe National Stalking Awareness Month. Therefore, Dickinson County declares January two thousand and sixteen a stalking awareness month and we applaud you for your efforts and the efforts of many victim services and police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and private sector supporters for their efforts in promoting awareness about stalking. So, thank you all. And if you want any resources, we brought some stalking information.
Do we need to have separate motions?
I'd imagine not.
Would you like any of these?
Yes.
Yeah, it's kind of a, it's a crime that we don't think about a lot and it just seems kind of silly. So thank you for reminding us.
You'd like to have a picture taken to the newspaper a lot?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
There you go, come forward.
Yeah, I'd like to have my picture taken.
Wash your face out again.
You want to do the motion first?
Yeah, well, we'll get up here, we'll have to do it when they're behind us.
Okay.
Okay. So you said?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Even behind us here, be fine.
We weren't prepared for our photo op.
That's all.
I wasn't either. I blew the cattle this morning, so much smell of everything. Yeah, I just love to have my picture taken. Oh, yeah.
It's the only picture you're gonna get of him.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Wait, we haven't made the motion yet here.
We gotta make the motion.
Yeah, okay.
I move that.
Yes.
I move that we approve the proclamations of the National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Proclamation and also the National Stalking Awareness Month Proclamation.
I'll second it. Been moved to second. Any other discussion? Glad to thank you for coming over. Appreciate the work you do. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carried. We'll sign them here and take the copy with you. Doug, Laverne's flagging. Anything for us today?
No, not on anything new. I certainly concur with the actions of the board in regards to the last two documents because you would not think human trafficking would be a problem in this timeframe in humanity's life.
Yeah.
But it absolutely is. It's probably worse now than it's ever been. And of course, stalking is always an issue. If you're the victim in it, it's very painful. So thank you guys for being here. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got two copies there.
Thank you for coming in. Appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Feel free to stay.
All right.
Yeah.
Brad, you want to give your report to the committee?
Yeah, I've got a brief one this morning. I've got a petition that we have received for vacate on Shady Lane. Shady Lane is just a short subdivision road off of Old Forty out on the bypass. And the, let me pull it up on the screen and show you if I'd be easier to explain it. Robert Cox is the petitioner and he and his grandmother own the property on both sides of the. See if we can get it to come up here. Yeah. Uh, this is the Old Forty Bypass. Let me try to move it more. The Old Forty Bypass. And right here, you can see my corner is where it turns off on Fourteenth, so you can kind of recognize it. This is Shady Lane and the Coxes own this property and this property. Where the green part is, is what they want to have vacated so that he can then do a combo and combine both these parcels together into one. This has never been developed. It was originally designed to be a driveway in case houses or something went down there. And it was never developed. So his driveway ends right here. It comes into the house. So to do the combo, we need to vacate the public driveway there. So it's kind of a no-brainer, but we will, we will do the paperwork on it.
That area right below, was that Kent Law's?
Yes, yeah, that's Kent.
And he doesn't need that access from there at all?
No. It's my understanding, Robert told me he had talked to Dr. Law.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
He didn't have a problem with it, but we'll certainly, he'll get a notice as well, so.
Well, that's why I was wanting.
Do we have to do everybody in a five mile?
No, there's no legal.
Okay.
It doesn't say.
Okay.
Because we'd get into Abley.
Yeah, right.
We're just gonna do the.
Surrounding property owners.
The property owners and, you know, we might have thirty or forty that we'll send it out to, but yeah, if we got into a multi-mile radius, we'd be getting into hundreds and hundreds, so. And it just, to me, it's just.
Well, mainly would affect him, I think would be the only one that would affect.
Yeah, so.
But he probably never.
Well, Lynn Daymal owns some property to sound there too, so we'll get a few of those people. But from looking in, I certainly don't see that there's any effect on anybody else, so. But, so I've got the petition here on Good Bar and she can file that. And then we've got the notice of hearing on that. I would suggest having the note or the hearing on, setting a public hearing maybe on February eighteenth. I was originally going to go the twenty-fifth, but that's the, that leadership training. If she decided to.
Yeah.
If she want to go down there, I didn't want to schedule anything on that date. So that would give us enough time to send the notice out and get with the township and.
So this, this date is?
February eighteenth.
February eighteenth.
If that works for the commissioner. So they would need to set that and we'll publish it.
Yeah, they need to make a motion.
Yeah.
Need to make a motion. Want to make the motion?
Yeah. Yeah, I move that we set up a hearing for the vacating of that small tract of in the ground there on.
Shady Lane?
On Shady Lane on January the eighteenth.
Fifty.
January.
February.
February the.
January would be just a little bit quicker.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carried.
Okay, and then of course you went through some of the end of the year cash balances with Zanell in the grand work session and I'm sure that she answered your questions on that until I think I would never. Is that our sales tax again is held solid? We had projected, uh, we had projected an annual budget of one point one five five million and we actually came out one point two two nine, so we came out ahead of what we projected. So that's really good news. Hopefully that will continue to come steady in light of the rest of the state's economy. The sheriff reported that they had two extraditions. They had arranged out of state. One came from Bentonville, Arkansas for, and the transport costs is right at six hundred dollars. The gentleman was Kansas City, Missouri for three and a quarter. They'll both be taken out of diversion. And then we've been, if you remember, we've got the fire district issue down here when we, when we created fire district number two.
Right.
Part of Jefferson Township needed to be juggled around. Then there's also the issue of twelve, I believe it's twelve sections in New Bern Township that have never paid the fire tax to anybody. And I've gotten with the township board members, New Bern Township, trying to get that petition passed around so that we could petition Sling County to officially take it into their fire district so that it all squares it up.
Right, and give up some of theirs.
Yeah. There was a swap and.
Yeah.
And because Sling County Fire District Number One actually responds to that or anyhow always has. Well, there's been some questions come up and apparently it's a little more confusing than what we take for granted. So we're gonna hold a meeting with the township and the people in that. Anybody that wants to come in from those twelve sections.
Sections.
On, sorry, February eighteenth. I know. Yeah, February eighteenth, that evening. Just an informative meeting and hopefully we can get enough people there, the wallet there, we can answer their questions and give them a signed petition so we can move forward on that, so. The township board members, just as soon as they started making phone calls or the questions asked, they couldn't answer, so they were calling me and they said, you know, we just, we don't have the word with all the answers, so. Keith Sprinkle suggested, well, let's have, is it possible to have the meeting? I said, absolutely so. So we're gonna have it here in the basement of the courthouse and hopefully be able to get that resolved and move forward, so.
Well, I made a mistake because I thought that was already through and somebody called me about that and I said, well, I think it's all taken care of.
It's not.
I thought it was.
Uh, we thought it was supposed to be by now, but the fire district down is still working on the petition, is my understanding from the Jefferson Township part, to get it released so that it is included in our fire district number two. And so, yeah, I should, we should have had it done, but it's just, you know, most, the fire chief is a farmer and they're just harvest and just time, it hasn't gone as fast as we'd like to.
Yeah. Have to call the guy back and say, huh, misspoke.
Yeah, so. You could tell him that you, we had planned on having it done long before now, but it just hasn't been completed, so. But that's all I've got today.
But you think it will get done, you think? Or is it a possibility that now it won't get done?
No, I think it will get done. It's just a matter of getting, getting the rest of the signatures. And I think when I talked to Chad Norris last, he was getting very close for the Jefferson Township portion, so. Yeah, I, you know, it's, I know the fire district, Sling County has agreed to it. They don't have a problem with it. Of course, whole fire, or district new, number two in Art County has agreed to it and are the petitioners, so just a matter of getting the signatures and going through the formality. So, yeah, I think it'll get done. It's just, I think they needed, I forget how many signatures they had, seventy-one or something, so.
So is it the Sling County, the one that was short in the signatures or both of them were short on the amount of signatures?
No, it was, it was the Art Fire District Number Two that needed to get the signature. Sling County doesn't have good.
Well, they doesn't have.
But once we get the petition signed by enough of the qualified electors, then that petition goes to the Sling County Commission to request that they release that portion of it. And then what we'll do is come back to you and ask you to incorporate that into Fire District Number Two so that it squares it out. But right now, it's part of Sling County Fire District Number One and we have to petition them to release that, so.
But Sling County doesn't have a problem with picking up the area that's.
Up in New Bern?
Yeah, that's not being served at all?
No.
They have no problem?
They've been serving it. They just haven't been getting any taxes on us for it.
Yeah.
So it only makes sense that they'd say, yeah, so, yeah.
But they don't have to get signatures to add that to their taxes?
We do. And that's what the meeting on February eighteenth is for. We'll have a petition there for them to sign because we have to have fifty-one percent of the qualified electors in those twelve sections to make that request. So that, that then will go to, assuming they want Sling County District One to be their fire district, then we'll go to Sling County as well and petition them to include that in their fire district. Are you confused yet?
Well, what I'm saying is, we're getting it for free now and you're gonna be asking them to sign something that say that it's gonna be on the tax roll, so Sling County Fire District are gonna have to kind of make the statement, well, if you don't want to sign it, we might not serve you, so.
That has been part of my conversation with the township board and that's been a couple of questions that have actually come up.
Because they could actually say.
Well, if I'm already getting served, why would I want to get, you know, have taxes added to it?
Yeah.
And, and my, my response to that was, well, if, if I was the Sling County Fire District Number One Board and, and I know that you made a conscious decision to deny paying taxes to us, our district does not cover you, therefore you're not in our jurisdiction. We won't serve you anymore. So, and, and if you go to get insurance on your home, home or business or something and your insurance company finds out that you don't have, you're not paying taxes to the fire department, you don't have fire coverage, you know what that's gonna do to your insurance.
Yep.
You know, you're either gonna go, if you're lucky, you're gonna go to the ten rating, which is the worst, or you're gonna get denied, so.
Well, it makes sense that they have somebody serve them and that, and they should pay have that service, but.
Yeah, it's only fair because otherwise everybody else in that district's paying for.
I'm just saying, some people think they can get free forever, so.
Yeah. Well, and I intend to have the Sling County representatives there that night too, so hopefully they'll.
Okay.
Be able to give their position, so. Anyhow, that's all I've got, so.
Hey, Brad.
If you're not confused now, I can confuse you more later.
Notice of Communications, we've got a magazine from the Gestures International out of Utica, New York. It's on disaster recovery. You know, it's probably a private company the way it looks. We got our share of the H Judicial District Community Corrections. What our payment will be for the two thousand and sixteen, our twenty-five percent share is eight thousand ninety-three dollars. Deposit funds received from each county and voucher payments to K-CAN. Got a renewal from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for permit number eight, five, two, permitted hazardous waste to Dixon County, stop the landfill. We need to provide a copy of our insurance and, and stuff to the state. North Central Regional Planting Commission letter. This marks the forty-fourth year for the North Central Planting Commission. On January twenty-eighth, the executive board will focus on new development considerations as the new term begins undertaking student region. And if I'm not reappointed, they'd likely, who is going to be appointed? And then we do have a clerk of district court monthly from Senate of Congress.
Have you asked Doug with H and A comments?
Oh, we did.
Okay, I missed that one.
Uh, new introduction, consideration of resolutions. Resolution for the gap waiver in two thousand and sixteen, resolution number oh-one fourteen sixteen. I'll just go through it's, well, I don't, I need to read it. It's doing away with the county.
General accepted.
Yeah, general accepted, county procedures. We're waiting that. I have a motion for a resolution. I'll make it, resolution oh-one fourteen sixteen.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carried. And we have resolution oh-one fourteen sixteen A. Resolution established the appointment of board members to the Dixon County Superior District Number Two Board of Directors. Uh, I guess I can read that. It's not, yeah, it's reappointing Mark Pickering to serve on the Superior District Number Two.
I move that we make that appointment, Mark Picking for the Dixon County Superior District Number Two Board of Directors.
Seconded. Any discussion? Not all, first say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carried. No unfinished business. Other business, annual commission reorganization, county appointments. First up, new county chair, nominate Laverne Myers.
Do I have to second that?
We can do without it.
I'll second it.
Been moved to second. If no other discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carried. Uh, I'd move we select Lynn Peterson as vice chair.
I'll second it.
Been moved to second. Any discussion? Not all, in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carried. Appointment of county engineer, John Goff. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Been moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carried. Appointment of county health official, Dr. Brian Holmes. I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Been moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carried. Set official courthouse hours, operations from eight to five daily for two thousand and sixteen. Hall of Fame closures set forth in Dixon County employee handbook. sixteen, hall of day closures set forth in Dixon County employee handbook.
I move that we accept that, uh, schedule?
Second it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Set official work session and meeting dates and times for permission currently were, session started nine into eleven, with regular meetings starting at eleven until conclusion. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Been moving to second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Designate the county newspaper for two thousand sixteen, the Abilene Reflector Chronicle.
I still move.
Been moving to second it? Or I'll second it? Been moving to second it? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Appoint representative to Central Kansas Mental Health Center Board for two thousand sixteen, currently that's Commissioner Peterson, I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Been moving to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Representative to appoint the North Central Juvenile Detention Board for two thousand sixteen, currently Commissioner Myers. I'll move that we appoint Commissioner Myers.
I'll second it.
Been moving to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Point representative to North Central Regional Planning Commission Board for two thousand sixteen, I'm currently on that, I'll continue to do it.
I move that we appoint Chamberlain to that position?
I'll second it, been moving to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Designate the official depositaries for the county, for the county for two thousand sixteen. U M B Bank, Abilene Branch of Astro Bank, Solomon State Bank, Solomon Branch, Solomon State Bank, Abilene Branch, Pinnacle Bank of Abilene, Dixon County Bank of Enterprise, Central National Bank of Harrington, Citizens Bank of Woodbine, First National Bank of Hope, Hope Branch, First National Bank of Hope, Harrington Branch, First Bank of CANS Abilene Branch. I move we make these our official depositaries?
Second it.
Been moving to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Adopt official fee schedule for two thousand sixteen, be published on the county website.
I move that, make that motion?
Second it, been moving to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Adopt payroll counter as submitted by the H R director. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Been moving to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Adopt official pay grade schedule for two thousand sixteen, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Been moving to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Adopt resolution regarding gap, general accepted accounting practices, waiver?
We did.
Oh, we did that, yeah.
Those last two we already did.
And, yep, did that. Anything else come for this motion today?
I just need you to sign the fee schedule, and...
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Oh, we'll sign it for later. Oh, okay.
This one?
Yeah.
I put the same as big on the top, that's the same one I emailed to you earlier. Not a lot changes on it, just some technical changes, a dollar here, a dollar there on the health department fees that changed consistent with insurance rates.
There's just one page design? Uh, we did have in our work session, the register of deeds, the changes haven't been, been brought to everybody's attention, so they're having some problems collecting those, so imagine that. You're taking a motion to adjourn?
I move with adjourn.
I'll second it, I'm, been moving to second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Stand adjourned.